Well, everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the City of Mormon's Regular Meeting of Council. On this twenty-fifth day of October, I now call this meeting to order. Any announcements? Okay, hearing none, we'll move down for a motion then to approve the agenda. Counselor Peterson.
Like to make the motion to approve the Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Regular Meeting of Council Agenda as presented.
Secondar? Counselor Thule? Any additions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. We'll move down to minutes, motion please. Counselor Johnson?
I move to adopt the minutes from the Tuesday, October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, Regular Meeting of Council as presented.
Secondar? Counselor Ramech? Any questions from the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Again, I'll just do carried if if it's unanimous, if it's not unanimous, I'll ask for those opposed. We'll move down to delegations and petitions. We were doing this, we have two delegations tonight, so we'll do it in two parts. The first one will be Andrew Loman, and we did get a report sent to us from both Mr. Loman and also from City Manager Smith. So I'll give you the floor for ten minutes, Andrew, if you'd like to talk to us. And then we'll ask questions if there's any other questions needed for clarification.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, now I got a screen from the agenda in front of me.
This is your report you sent, so that's just to make it public.
Yeah, no, that's the report I sent, yeah. And you want, okay, you give me ten minutes, here I go.
You've got ten minutes.
I don't need them.
Okay.
You all read the email between the city and myself, so I'll just go over a few points. I did not talk to Public Works on July eleventh, twenty twenty, stated an agenda report. I had no knowledge that there was any work being done or complaints by my neighbors about the alley before June nineteenth, the day of my first phone call. That day, the water came up at least five feet from the fence and forty inches deep along the fence. Witnessed by your city employee. He came here. This city picture of June eleventh shows the water flowing out of our yard. City manager gave many excuses why our trees have died. Saturated by water for five months was not among them. These trees survive four summers and four winters. Yes, my sump pump runs all the time. I keep a close eye on it, making sure it flows out of the yard. City bylaw states we have to direct the water to the alley. Because of our neighbor's complaint of flooding in the back alley, the city regraded, causing their yard to flood. Because it wasn't done properly until this spring, my question to you is, after three phone calls in twenty twenty, why wasn't this fixed last summer? We feel that the city neglected in fixing the problem last year. All we are looking for is to have our trees replaced. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you for that, Andrew. Or Mr. Loman, I should be calling you.
Lumen, actually, but yeah, that's all right.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions from any council members? Clarification? Just, yes, go ahead, Counselor Johnson.
I was just gonna ask, so that was the water just extremely bad this year? You said two thousand sixteen, you planted all of the trees and there was no other issues prior to that?
No. Our sump pump always directed it properly, right? And it always flowed into the back lane. As you can see in one of the pictures, you can see where the water's sitting there, and then it would come back. It's lower right behind our fence after they graded. It always flowed to Pebble Beach Boulevard the whole time we're here, until June nineteenth last year, when we came home from the lake, we weren't even here. And then I saw the flooding.
Any other questions? Counselor Beck.
Yeah, you know, certainly, thank you very much for, you know, certainly for like the detailed report and all of the pictures there and whatnot and and certainly like the account that had gone on. So I do have a question. So with this year, when I look at the grading that was done in the back alley, to me, it looks like, like obviously like there's a bit of a crown there in the center, and then also with this year, you know, let's say almost looks like that, like that depression near the fence line and whatnot, to kind of capture all of the water and the runoff, you know, that that would typically happen during, let's say, a rain event or, you know, snow melting and that kind of thing. So I don't know, I mean, like when I look at it, to me, it looks like it's graded, you know, very well, you know, and that kind of thing, you know, something that I would expect to see on 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 a back alley. And and also with here, like, like there again, when I see the, you know, let's say the, you know, you know, let's say the ground kind of, you know, let's say pushed up on the fence line. To me, that also looks like a way of trying to make sure that the water that is on the back lane stays on the back lane, you know, and that kind of thing, and obviously whatever water or moisture would be, you know, let's say on your property would would more or less, you know, you know, kind of, you know, kind of, you know, let's say be your responsibility to look after. So I don't know, I mean, like there again, when I look at it, that's what I see. So I don't know, I'm not, I just thought I'd, you know, put that out there.
I'll let you speak.
I'll answer your second question first. That grading up against, they did that for the last five years. I should have phoned them, but I went out there because there's some pump runs. I raped it every year. So that our water flowed to the back lane. And I don't know which, and your first question, I don't know which picture you're looking at, because in spring, it wasn't flowing to Pebble Beach Boulevard. You're probably looking at a picture that after they fixed it this spring, and now it's been flowing perfect all summer. And if they would have did this last summer, we wouldn't be here.
Uh, who was this here? The pictures that I'm looking at are page two of eight from 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 your submission.
Okay, what? Okay, that was spring, yeah. See, the water's sitting behind my fence there? Like not the white fence, the other fence there. It's there. And I wish I had a picture from last year, but I don't. And the water came up and it's witnessed by your city employee, saw the water in my backyard, and what it does, it sits behind that fence, it builds up in my, and once it gets high enough, sure enough, then it starts flowing. But our trees were saturated all last summer. I'd walk between them and it sank down four or five inches in between the trees, just saturated.
Any other questions or comments? Is just one question about the one tree. Is that one tree by your garage still alive? Is that one still?
That one, yeah, by my shed there.
Yeah.
So the water, you can, if you zoom it in, you can see the, I was standing in my pipes or would go to the back lane, right, for my sub pump. It never flowed south. But, yeah, it, everything went north and sat there.
Okay.
And I have two identical trees up front that are flourishing too.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thule?
Hi, just a quick question around what I guess has changed.
Counselor Thule, you're not very loud right now. You maybe have to adjust your volume.
Okay, okay, I'm not sure. Let me know if it's better now or not.
Nope, still low. It's quite low.
Uh, give me one second. I may have to put a headset on.
Let's see how this is better?
Yes.
Okay, just a question I have just around, I guess, the grading in the back alley and in your time in the property, what is that you changed in the grading from, say, two thousand and eighteen, when the trees were initially planted, to what the situation would have been last spring? Like, was there, was there some difference that happened where it had graded differently or anything like that, or what? What are you aware of?
Well, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand and twenty, well, you saw the picture, the city took June eleventh. At the water, yeah, it flowed. I, I don't use the back lane. Well, I do. I backed my trailer in the back there. Pulled it out in spring, put it back in the fall, but they always graded bad, but I went out there and I raped it. You know, but it did always flow to Pebble Beach Boulevard until they did this new grading, and then it didn't.
Oh, any other questions or comments?
Last year, we had a lot of water or some.
So a lot of water and sub pump, we didn't get a lot of natural, or you're talking the previous year, not twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty? Any other questions or comments?
It's our.
You seem to have frozen here.
So rain, we haven't had much rain in the last how many years, but it's our slump pump.
Okay.
Have I? I'm still. Can you hear me?
Coming on and off a bit. Someone else is using the internet or something. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Luman?
No, I'm, I've said my piece.
Okay.
I'm not happy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation talk. You're most welcome to stay on. I prefer right now that it'll be council discussing this. So actually, well, James and and Andrew, if you could turn off your cameras right now until you're called upon, please, thank you.
So you're going to call me back again?
No, I'm not calling you back. You can listen in now. We'll, we'll go to the manager's report at this point. So you, you can turn your mic off, but you're most welcome to listen in at this point. Okay, we'll move down then to administration reports. We'll start with our city manager. Manager Smith.
Thank you, worship. The report I have is on the request for compensation from Mr. Lumen at five twenty-three Sneed Lane. I have provided some history on emails and the discussion that's taken place regarding the request for council's review and consideration. The resident is requesting compensation in the amount of fourteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the seven seeders that, in his opinion, died as a result of lane maintenance behind his residence. The city has offered the amount of a hundred and sixty dollars replacement cost of four seeders to resolve the matter, although we do not believe that the death of the trees can be attributed to the maintenance of the lane, but rather a lot of other issues that could have done it as well. So there is no definite reason as to why they died. And that's the, that's the reason that we, I provided the, the offer of the hundred and sixty dollars. Mr. Lumen advised or observed, observations are somewhat different in that he feels that the seeders died due to the water accumulating in this backyard that cannot escape to the lane due to the grading of the lane. And also provided four options for council's consideration. Council may wish to accept Mr. Lumen's request for compensation, the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars for replacement of the seven seeders at a cost of two hundred dollars a cedar. Council may wish to deny the request and present the previous offer by city administration in the amount of a hundred and sixty dollars for replacement of the four seeders. And council may wish to deny Mr. Lumen's request for compensation in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And option four will be council may wish to explore other options that are not presented in this report. And provided a recommendation, request for compensation in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars be denied. And if anybody has any further questions on my report, this appendix A, I can certainly speak to them.
Counselor C.
Thank you, Mr. Phil Chuck. One question I have, just looking at the report now, again, and with the pictures that are provided, is that I see that Juran has requested a replacement for seven seeders at the fourteen seventy-seven. Looking at the pictures, and I might be missing something, I don't see seven seeders that were there and are now gone. I'm just curious as to how many actually were taken out through this process.
Mr. Lumen would have to speak to that.
Okay, I'll allow him to speak, Mr. Lumen, if you have a comment on how many seeders were actually there. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, there were seven, total of eight, one still alive, and there were seven seeders there, and last fall, two of them, I cut them down. Two of them I cut down last fall, and when Bob Smith was here, he saw the two missing places there, that there were seven of them. Two of them still are kind of green, but they're such an eyesore, we took them down.
Okay.
They survived the summer.
Hey, you've been given the information, counsel. I'm looking for a motion, so we can discuss this or. Counselor Beck.
Sure for that. Um, I suppose I'd be willing to to support administration's, you know, background and history and, you know, you know, let's say, you know, and kind of keeping, you know, like, you know, let's say like our processes in place. So I do move that Mr. Lumen's request for the compensation in the amount of fourteen seventy-seven be denied.
Secondar for that? Counselor Peterson? Any questions or comments? Counselor Thule?
Really quick, just a procedural question for administration, and I know this has been something we've, we've somewhat talked about in the past. But are we able to make a negative motion in the sense of where we're suggesting at the end of it that something is to be denied? So I just want to clarify that that is a motion that is properly before us.
Okay, point of order. City Clerk Armstrong, any comments to that?
Uh, that one is a new one for me. I can't see why not, but I'd have to look into it. Further.
Same manager, Smith.
Yeah, these are, I understand where Counselor Thule is coming from. It does come as a negative when you're denying their request, but you're also acting on something, so you can either deny the request or accept the fourteen seventy-seven. Or you can do an amendment to, or you can do amendment to the motion to have it reduced or, you know, a lower amount, etc.
I believe we talked about this before, and we were fine with the negative motion, knowing that we are making a decision on something that we, instead of just not doing anything. And we've done that with, I think we just did one of those recently with Counselor Ramech in the past. Um, so I have a mover and a second or other comments, Counselor C.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. As somebody that certainly is not an arborist and has implanted a whole bunch of trees, the concern that I have with this and the issue that I'm seeing with it is doing a quick search to see what six to seven foot cedar trees cost. I can't see the evaluation of the the fourteen hundred dollars that Mr. Lumen is taking a look at. A quick look online, and I can certainly attest to the fact that there's some care and maintenance that happens with it. There's six to seven front cedar trees that are, seems to be regularly available for anywhere between forty to fifty dollars. So I'm just, I'm a little bit lost as to the monetary value that's being requested. That would be my reason for for not supporting the or for supporting the motion, I should say.
Okay, Counselor Smith, and then we'll, not Counselor, sorry, same manager, Smith.
Um, just in in my report, Counselor C, I think on about the third or fourth or fifth page, somewhere in there is an email for Mr. Lumen, and it does say seven trees at one hundred dollars each plus GST, PST, for seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and then seven trees labor for seven hundred dollars. That's where the total of the fourteen seventy-seven comes from. I can tell you my, the reason that we provided forty dollars is for four to five foot cedar, a new four to five foot cedar is about thirty-nine dollars, forty dollars to buy it Home Depot or.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, and just, you know, with that fourteen seventy-seven, you know, let's say amount, with the sheriff's going to comment as to, as to, let's say, the valuations on that. You know, certainly one of the things there that, you know, you know, that I do have an issue with with fourteen seventy-seven is the fact that seven hundred dollars of that is attributed to labor. You know, this year, like there again, I can, I can certainly make the justification for for making a reimbursement for the actual trees if 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 council was to make a motion on that. But certainly with this year, the seven hundred dollars in terms of labor, you know, with this year, like there again, you know, like that's somewhat subjective, like there's no, you know, you know, you know, and there again, you know, quite honestly, I don't think that that the city should be on the hook for for any labor amount, you know, like certainly like in a situation like this. So so that's my reason for, you know, for putting in the, you know, denying that fourteen seventy-seven amount.
Okay, and I'll just have a couple of comments here. First of all, we have an arborist in Grant, and he and he had an opinion on this. And and I do listen to some of the other things that were there, and even even looking at the one tree that survived, you talk about the shelter and and the view that was there. And Mr. Lumen did a good job explaining, and I'm not sure how that would have worked if the pipe would have gone to the right side of the property or not. But I also did, right when I did visit Mr. Lumen's place, I checked at at Home Depot had these types of trees for forty dollars, and so did Costco at the time, that were bigger at the same sort of range. So I, I, you know, the forty dollars does seem as a fair reimbursement or offer that I think our same manager did offer at this point. But any other questions or comments from council? Counselor Ramech.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. I think I'd agree with replacing, replacing the trees at a forty dollar value. I do think that there are a number of factors that could have contributed to these trees dying that are that are beyond, beyond the city's control. Uh, but I think in a sense of fairness and to have this resolved, I I would be, I would be more interested in looking at at an option where it's just just the replacement of the of the trees at that forty dollar value.
Okay, and and we could actually do that as a second motion or an amendment. So I think we can deal with this one, and then we can have another motion if somebody would like to make that. Counselor Johnson was next. You're good, Counselor Thule?
I just want to make sure I got my microphone issues worked out. So are we okay for volume? Oh, yeah, perfect. I just want to double check with administration. You know, first of all, I do appreciate the report that we have in front of us, and I appreciate the opinion that we have from from the city's arborist. And and I do have to say that just from, you know, my personal experience with with seeders and from my experience just seeing various seeders around the city, I have seen a lot of instances of some of that winter kill or some of that direct over over sun exposure, where I've seen a lot of grounding within seeders. And I know personally I've had several in my different yards that I've had in Werman where they haven't made it very long. They've lasted maybe a season or two, and then they've, then they've died off. But one of the questions I have for administration is, what do we have for maybe a precedence around compensating a resident in a situation like this? Because I think whatever we do here, you know, may or may not have the the ability to kind of set at least a precedence for what we may do in the future.
I'm not sure if this will answer your question or not, Counselor, Counselor Thule, but I'll try. So, you know, if it's a direct result of negligence where, you know, we, let's say, a rock goes through a glass window or, you know, we, and we know that it, where it came from and and why it happened, we would, we would compensate either a deductible or or the damage. In in this case, and and as Counselor Ramech had spoke to in regards to to fairness, I guess that's kind of where I landed, was there is really no definitive proof that it died as, these died as a result of excess moisture, or whether they died of winter kill, or whether they died of sun scorches, whatever, or even other diseases and root rot systems or root rot in the systems. But I guess the biggest takeaway I I took from the arborist was that, you know, as you had mentioned, there there are fairly inexpensive landscape tree that has a tendency not to to be very difficult to get away from from disease and and death and susceptible to weather conditions. So that's, that was his comments, I guess. I don't know if that helps you out or not, but it certainly in lots of other times that, you know, people have asked for compensation, it can't be proven that the city was negligent in any way or was responsible in any way, we wouldn't pay the claim, but this one was kind of one in the in the middle where it was just felt in fairness, we would offer though. At that time, it was four trees.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, any other motions with this one? Counselor C.
I would like to make a motion as an amendment, I guess, or a new motion, I should say, for the forty-nine dollars per tree, as was indicated. For the cost of them, I do believe that there's, you know, a reasonable compensation can be made with regards to time spent planting them as well, if in fact it was determined, but it has not been. So I would be, the motion would be to provide the forty-nine dollars per tree that was killed with no monetary value for replanting.
There's no place with forty-nine dollars. I think it's.
I apologize. Was it thirty-nine?
Forty, yeah, forty dollars.
Sorry, thirty-nine, then the thirty-nine ninety-five per tree in the report would be the motion that I would make for the seven trees that were have apparently died.
Okay, secondar? Counselor Ramech? Questions or comments? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, just for clarification, Marshall, are you saying for for the four trees that, you know, that were indicated, or are you actually making this for seven?
Um, my motion would be for the seven, because it originally looks like there was four, but due to ongoing issues, it's become seven since. So my motion would stand for the seven trees.
Okay, any other questions or comments to this one? Counselor Thule?
Again, just maybe back to administration for this one, but previously, we had made an offer for compensating. previously we had made an offer for compensating for four trees, and, and now there's sort of this light about the seven. Just kind of want to get a little bit of perspective from administration on why we had offered for four previously, and, you know, what the discrepancy is, I guess, between the four and the seven.
When I visited the location on May twenty-fifth of this year, there was four that were, were dead when, when I was on on the property. I think, I don't, I think I'd sent some pictures that were on my phone to council, so you can kind of see where, where it was at at that time.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so motion for the seven trees at forty dollars. I'll call the question then. All those in favor? All those opposed? Defeated. Any other motions with this one? Counselor Tulley.
I'll put forward just a very similar motion to the last one that we had, but instead of the seven trees, I will go with the, the four that we had previously, that had been offered sort of by administration previously. I'll, I'll suggest that we go with a, a suggestion of reimbursement for four trees at the cost of forty dollars a tree.
Secondar? Counselor Johnson? Any questions with this one? Comments? Okay, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, we will move down to planning.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck, members of council. Two items for discussion tonight. The first is the intersection of First Avenue and Clubhouse Boulevard. We continue to have a presence at the intersection of First Avenue and Clubhouse Boulevard in order to educate the public and ensure everyone is following the rules of the road. On average, the number of pedestrians crossing the road in the last few weeks has dropped by about five in the morning and afternoon. I will note, we did have a couple of days nuanced last week where we had just over twenty kids. That was Wednesday and Thursday. Friday it dropped down just because of one of the schools did not have class that day, and today we were just back around twenty. The resources to maintain two people at the intersection are becoming more difficult to justify. In addition, it is a tough position for us to fill consistently. I mentioned during our previous discussions that we have contacted O H and S, and with our intent of education and oversight, there's no concerns with the one bylaw officer being located on, at, at the intersection. There's no O H and S concerns. After myself being on site for a few weeks and observing the number of pedestrian, pedestrians utilizing the crosswalk, as well as the way it integrates with the traffic, I believe it is becoming unnecessary to have the two people at, at the intersection every morning and afternoon. I've provided some options for council to consider. They are keep two employees at the intersection until it is deemed not necessary, either from the opening of Augusta Boulevard or a further reduction in the number of pedestrians. Transition to one employee at the crosswalk till the opening of Augusta Boulevard, or when the number of pedestrians utilizing the crosswalk drops even further, or transition to zero employees at the crosswalk. My recommendation tonight is that we transition to one employee at the crosswalk and monitor the situation, come back to council with regular updates.
Motion, please. Counselor Tulley.
Yeah, can, I'll move to transition the, or to one employee at the crosswalk at the intersection of Clubhouse Boulevard and First Avenue North until the opening of Augusta Boulevard extension, or whenever pedestrians utilizing the crosswalk drops further due to traffic or to weather, whichever comes first.
Secondar? Counselor Peterson? Questions or comments? Counselor Ramage.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. It's, it took some time since our last committee, the whole meeting, to do a little bit of, a little more research on this intersection and some of the conditions that we're seeing. But I'd just like to take one, just one second, just to clarify and make sure that I understood some of our discussion at committee, the whole correctly. Mayor Philip Chuck, you had mentioned that you had a conversation with a bus driver that mentioned there was, or there was maybe not the bus driver, but there was some anecdotal observations that was taking two to three minutes to move through the intersection for traffic?
I did not talk to any bus driver or gotten any of that information. So I, I think ours planner talked to the bus in garage.
Yeah, I believe that came from City Manager Smith in my discussion on site with Bill Steckler of the Prairie School, Prairie Spirits School Division Bus Barn. We met on site one afternoon to view the intersection and have a conversation about it.
Okay, thanks very much for that clarification. It's, but that was around that range of time that we're seeing two to three minutes or that additional time for, for vehicles to go through that intersection. That, that's a fair, a fair range of time?
Correct, yes.
Because I think, okay, so my, my concern is going through, taking some time to go through the transportation master plan. On page seventy-one of that PDF, it talks about delay-based level of service of vehicles going through an unsignaled intersection, and what the corresponding wait time on a level of service basis is. If it was between thirty-five point one seconds and fifty seconds, it would operate at a level of service of E, which the transportation master plan describes as operations at this level are volatile, as there's virtually no usable gaps in the traffic stream, and vehicles are closely spaced, leaving little room to maneuver. A level of service F would be greater than fifty seconds, and we're looking at at wait times of two to three minutes. Recognizing that there are a number of factors that go into that level of service calculation, and that these are anecdotal numbers, these haven't been verified independently. But my concern would be that right now those two crossing guards are functioning as safety measure in this intersection, whereas there were no, they, it was left as an unsignaled intersection before. But so I'm not prepared to support any of the recommendations right now until that there was, there would be a similar safety measures or greater put into the intersection. And I consider council's input on getting some direction on administration on how we can improve that level of service to increase of safety for pedestrians as, safety for pedestrians is linked to vehicle movements.
Yeah, and I guess that's correct in terms of what the T M P says. I don't think that the transportation master planner, that calculation did consider duration during the day, in terms of how long that wait time is in place for. As we've alluded to in previous reports, we're talking of kind of a window between ten and fifteen minutes in the morning and afternoon. These, beyond that, you know, counts are very low at that intersection, but point well received.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Seed.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. In the recommendation, something I was looking for clarification on is that it, what it says, further reduce the number of pedestrians due to weather, or pedestrians, sorry, reducing the number of pedestrians utilizing the crosswalk drops, or further due to weather. Again, what is the benchmark for this that we're thinking? I mean, is it minus ten, minus fifteen? What is the, what's the kind of threshold that we are thinking there? Because it's kind of an open-ended statement, just saying due to weather. There's no parameters for what that, you know, buses don't go after minus thirty or thirty-five. That's a, that's a pretty easy way to calculate, but I'm just looking for some clarification.
Yeah, and I don't think we're necessarily saying it'll be weather dependent. I think what we're trying to say is what we're seeing is, is on those colder days, the pedestrian numbers dropping. And whatever that number is in terms of council feeling comfortable to, you know, perhaps discontinue it altogether, I don't know. I think the thought was, is that we would continue because of the importance of this intersection with council. We would continue to bring back kind of monthly updates, just in terms of what we're getting for population, or sorry, pedestrian numbers, and, and provide some recommendations based on kind of what's happening at the time. I don't want to try and guess in terms of what we're going to be in, say, end of November, beginning of December. But yeah, the intent behind the motion was not that we, you know, when it gets to a certain temperature below zero, that we would stop. It was more just in terms of what we're seeing on the ground right now, is when the temperature drops, the pedestrian numbers drop as well. So if we got to December, when it's, say, minus twenty, and we're getting, you know, one or none kind of crossing the road, then that would be a different discussion. But if we're still seeing similar numbers to today, then the recommendation would probably be to continue to have the one bylaw officer on, on site until Augusta Boulevard opens up.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make. And first of all, I guess, just dealing with operations in general, like when we're making motions about operations, we run into these situations about, I think, our, our frontline, our employees are closer to the situation, they see it on a regular base, and then also have the flexibility to make decisions. A good example would be that when buses aren't running, I'm guessing we will need more people there than just the one, or whatever it might be, knowing that there's going to be a lot of vehicles driving that day. So, so I, I guess anytime we're dealing with operations and giving very tight, this is what you need to follow, we, we can run into problems like this. I, I guess, just talking to this one specifically, I, I looked at it as an educational opportunity to, to be a teachable moment for our kids, to have an adult to oversee that we were looking, and we had an employee of the city of Warham, and seeing what's happening at that crosswalk on a daily basis, and then have a good view of, and then report back to planning and to city manager about what they are seeing, their observations. It is, safety is definitely number one, but we do have crossing lights there, and, and we want to make sure that, and, and we do have the police that are notified too. So I, I do support administration's recommendation here to reduce it to one, and then look at what happens when Augusta opens. But I also open it up to administration to be able to be flexible, that if they feel they need more, that they make that change as they need to, as they should. In some ways, we create the policy that we want a safe intersection. As Counselor Ramage mentioned, we have a T M C that, a, a transportation master plan that here's what we're expecting, and then we can point back to there within that safety. So I, I guess it's, I don't want to say you can't do something or can do something based on that. As much, when we get into those operations, it, it can be tough. So that's my comments. Counselor Peterson.
I just wanted to maybe kind of make a point of clarification about something you said about if, you know, about if the, the traffic increases enough, needing more people. Our motion wasn't for our people to be there to deal with traffic. Our, our motion, the original motion we passed was for, for the staff to be there to help pedestrians go. So if the buses don't run and traffic increases, that shouldn't affect how, what we have for staff there at all.
Fair enough. Other questions or comments? Counselor Beck.
Yeah, and you know, you know, with this year, Gary, you know, quite honestly, I'm like a lot of, of, you know, things that you put, you know, forth and whatever in this area, I do certainly agree with. You know, I mean, like, like I do think that our administration does need to, you know, you know, to, to certainly, you know, hold like, like the traffic, or permanently like, like the pedestrian traffic there, you know, let's say in high regard. And if they feel that it's two people, then, you know, quite honestly, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to give them the leeway of having the two people. And if they feel that one is, is adequate with, with what it is that we're doing, as much as I'm, you know, for me, I, you know, like I did say at the committee of the whole meeting, quite honestly, I'm at two, or also I'm at zero, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, like, we've done our job and we're no longer needed, and, you know, at that point there, you know, like the, like the traffic controls that we have in place, or the pedestrian crossing, like is sufficient or it's not. And, you know, you know, with this here, I'm like, I do still feel that, you know, that that input from the Prairie Spirits School Division, or even resources, or, or, you know, some, some degree of workability, you know, or, you know, from them coming forward certainly would put me in, in a whole different category. But I, I, I do feel that the city has, has definitely gone up and beyond. You know, with this here, you know, let's say, like our responsibility for, you know, for pedestrians. Honestly, you know, with this here, when I do look at it, I, I look back at all of this, and I'm just going like, you know what? To me, eventually, traffic lights are going to come, you know, in that whatever. And with this here, you know, quite honestly, you know, I mean, like, I think we could have, you know, you know, like if, if we said that that was absolutely important, that there should have been moved on at that time, we'll wait to see the next budget and what happens in twenty twenty-two. But as for this here, quite honestly, I would, I would like to give the, like, the leeway to administration and not mandate the one person. It'd be, you know what, you know, for, you know, for administration to either supply two, one, or zero. That's just my thought on it.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Johnson.
Sorry, I can't find the unmute button. I was going to say, it, it kind of makes me a little bit nervous when we're dealing in absolutes, and, and it's either, you know, two or nothing. I do think we need a duty of care, and again, I'm supporting administration in this, and that they are keeping an eye and getting those numbers and talking to the right people that they need to be talking to. We want to make sure that those kids are safe. And if we go all or none, then what had the, we neglected our duty of care. I support that one, that transition as far as the education piece, making sure that those kids do are careful. But I do understand that, that, what Counselor Seed had said about the, the weather, and what Counselor Peterson said as well, with, then it becomes a congestion issue. That the, the buses won't be traveling if, say, it is a minus thirty-five or a minus forty, so there's going to be more people. So then what do we do in that situation? I think it's, as long as we're getting kind of some continuous updated information on what we need, I support administration with having one person there as a duty of care for those kids.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Seed.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. Just again, a point of clarification then. So the motion that's in front of us right now is to give administration the opportunity to reduce to one civic employee, but not to zero until Augusta Boulevard is opened. That's correct?
That's, the motion is as stated there, it's one until Augusta Boulevard is open, or they bring something to us and it's changed. But until something else has changed, they will have one.
And, but the weather, the weather that's listed in both those motions provided in the council package are not on the table.
Not until they bring it back to us, yes.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Ramage?
Thank you. And just to, just to be clear in, in the intent of what I'm saying here, I, I appreciate everything administration has done, and the work that has been put into providing that opportunity for a safe crossing for our kids at the school. My, my, my intent to vote against the motion is not against administration. It's more just based off of my own, my own research, my own perception on this, that I feel that two, that two employees there that are qualified to, to do this work actually is a benefit to the safety of traffic going through the intersection, which ultimately is to the benefit of all the kids and, and the people trying to cross it. So it's, hey, appreciate everything administration's doing. I feel that I'm just not comfortable reducing the safety measures at this intersection at this time.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call the question. Remember that this is for, as stated, as the recommendation, to one until brought back to council, or until Augusta Boulevard is opened, and still with clarification at that time. So all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, anything else?
Thank you. My second item for discussion, sorry, just had to make sure I wasn't muted there. My second item for discussion tonight is a C N whistle cessation. As council is aware, the city has been working with C N over the last few years with the end goal of requesting whistle cessation at the two intersections within city limits.
Just, I'm going to maybe pause you here, because I did have a delegation that was going to speak, and I actually was going add them down that was going to speak before you here. So sorry about that. So I have James Braun here, and he's here to speak about this. He asked for time, so you have up to ten minutes and with questions. So James, the floor is yours. If you could introduce yourself too. If you could introduce yourself too.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's James Braun. Uh, I grew up around Ozer area and currently live in Warman. Um, I just, I noticed a post on Facebook about the about C N requesting the city install a fence around their their lot. Uh, I'm just wondering who owns the land, like, does C N own the land or does the city own the land? That's my first question. Uh, and then if if C N owns the land, then they should be responsible for putting up the fence. Uh, I don't see any difference than if, say, one of us buys a new lot, puts up a new house and wants a fence, we don't go to the city and say, I need a fence, you guys have to fence my yard. It's it's our responsibility as a homeowner and a landowner to fence our own property. Now, if the city owns the land and C N is requesting a fence and they're paying a lease on this land or rent on this land, I see that the city put up a fence, but then charge according to how much the fence costs to install and maintain. C N should still have to cover the cost of it. Um, my other concern is um that along South Railway, just north of there, between there and the tracks, that C N yard is a is a disaster, to put it politely, um, driven by the numerous times going to the hardware store and and to the park with my kids and that. And there's trash laying everywhere. So I would suggest the city put forward a motion that C N clean up and maintain their lot. And also possibly that C N move their yard to east of the Worm and Diamond Arena and the football field and put in a fence compound between the railroad tracks there east of of that street and and the football field in there. Just move move it totally away from the residential area. Um, that's that's my only concern, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'll I'll get uh Major Toth to give some clarification on some of the points you mentioned.
Yeah, thanks, James. Um, so the fence, or or sorry, it is C N property, uh zoned industrial. Um, I guess the reason the city is on the hook, so to speak, for the cost of the fences because the fence is required as a uh as per request that we've requested for the whistle cessation. Uh, C N would be more than happy to continue kind of with status quo in terms of blowing the horns at the intersection. Uh, the request came from the city to uh, I guess, explore whistle cessation. And when we started to do that in terms of the safety improvements necessary to ensure that it's safe under C N standards, these are the uh improvements that would need to be made to the intersection to make Transport Canada feel comfortable. Uh, there has been some cost sharing with Transport Canada in terms of some of the improvements. Uh, the arms and flashing lights which were installed a number of years ago was a cost share between the city and Transport Canada as part of a program that they have. Um, so the city hasn't been on the hook for all of the costs associated with some of these improvements necessary. Um, but in terms of the fence, uh any discussions that we've had with C N, because it's a result of a request we've made, it would be our responsibility to cover.
Okay. Um, and Counsel Peterson had mentioned your exact same thing about cleaning the yard. So he was gonna talk about the roundtable. So uh, it's a timely issue. Uh, any other questions or comments to uh Mr. Braun?
Um, I guess, just like, I I live down at the very south end of Sixth Avenue, just by the Corbin Park shop there. And and uh just right around the railroad tracks crossing on Sixth Avenue. If there could be more streetlights put up, because I know there's a lot of foot traffic in the evenings, like people like to walk to Tim Hortons and and it's awesome seeing people out exercising, taking their kids for a walk, whatever. But when dust hits, it's hard to see the pedestrians crossing the street. So um, if if the city could put motion forward for next year, maybe put up a couple more streetlights at those intersections, that would be awesome.
Thank you, James. Uh, any any more questions or comments for uh James? Okay, thank you for your time, James. And uh now, if you could turn off your camera, we will go into uh talking about this from our uh planning report. So uh, Major Toth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. Um, the city has been working with C N over the last few years with the end goal of requesting the whistle cessation at two intersections within city limits. The locations are the crossing on Industrial Road South and Sixth Avenue South. Uh, there still will be an uncontrolled crossing west of the city on Thompson Road South that will be subject to standard rules around blowing the whistle. However, the whistle cessation within the two intersections will really improve the um noise between Sixth and Industrial. A number of improvements have been made to both crossings, new pavement and sidewalk, better line markings and signage, control arms, lights and bells, uh as mentioned before, which was a cost share between the city and Transport Canada. Uh, C N still had the outstanding concern regarding the trespassing on their property, uh which the city is proposing to address with the installation of a five-foot chain link fence. I provided some quotes the city's received to install that fence. Um, the city undertook uh in in anticipation of whistle cessation, the city undertook an extensive notification program that included advertisement in the local paper for the weeks of September ninth and sixteenth, social media posts, including Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. And as a part of our requirements, we were required to send individual letters to over forty organizations associated with C N to notify them of the changes. Uh, it's taken a number of years for the city to get to this point. The city seems to receive most complaints during the summer months or early spring when people seem to open their windows more. However, we do receive regular complaints throughout the fall and winter months. Uh, if a motion is passed at this meeting, we will work to get the fence installed this year as well as work with C N to get a formal date for when the whistles will uh cease. Uh, although this should satisfy C N requirements, if anything changes or any other um notes of discussion come up, we will bring that back to council for further discussion. But we provided two recommendations for council to consider tonight.
Thank you. Um, motion please. There's two motion, two recommended recommendations there. Does anybody like to make a motion? Uh, Counsel Ramage.
I moved that the train whistling stop at the crossings of Industrial Road South. Oh, hold on here.
Think you're done.
Um, I I moved that council pass a motion requesting that train whistling stop at the crossings of Industrial Road South mile sixty-six decimal zero seven and Sixth Avenue South mile sixty-five decimal five four.
Secondary for that? Counsel Johnson? Questions or comments? Counsel Seed.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. Uh, just a question I have and I guess a point of clarification is that uh being familiar with those crossings and definitely understanding residents' concern about the whistle cessation and also recognizing the amount of work that administration has put into uh getting this done. Um, the fencing that we're talking about uh in your proposal, Major Toth, uh says that the fence will end west of Sixth Avenue South. Um, my concern here is, do we have anything in writing or indication from C N that if we put up this fence and it doesn't also cover the Sixth Avenue South crossing, that in fact, we will be able to proceed with this? My my concern is, we put up a fence to just west of Sixth Avenue and then they say, okay, we'll stop doing the whistles on Industrial Road, but we're not going to do that on on six because you don't have a fence there. And we're back in the same process for another fifty thousand dollars for the fence.
Yeah, I apologize, Counsel Seed, now that you've brought that up. It's actually should have read east of Sixth Avenue South. So I apologize for that. Uh, that was a miss on my part.
Okay, so this does cover both crossings then? And do we have an indication, and I understand this is a bit presumptuous, do we have anything from the C N that says, we put up this fence, we get your rubber stamp?
We have an email from C N that says that uh we've supplied them with the plans for the fence done by an engineer. Uh, we have an email from them that says that that will address their trespassing concern. Uh, we also have an email that uh outlines that they have accepted all of our other uh improvements to address any of the other concerns that were previously noted within the C N report. So um, from the city's perspective and administration's perspective, we met all the requirements and we have confirmation that with the installation of the fence, they will approve this whistle cessation.
Right here. And remember, this motion specifically is about the us requesting whistle cessation. So this is not about the fence at all at this point, but I, that's a separate motion. But I'm fine with the questions. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none on this one, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Carried? Okay, and for the second motion? Counselor Beck.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, Mayor Phil Chuck. I would like to move to accept the quote from Madison Fencing for, pardon me, Mattson Fencing for fifty thousand, six eighty-two and forty-three cents for the installation of the fence. As noted, has uh basically three thousand uh feet of fence, five feet high uh to cover the um, uh, let's say, like the railway yards there.
Secondary? Counsel Tulley? Questions or comments? Counsel Peterson.
Mr. Braun is one hundred percent correct, and that is, uh, if this is about fencing off C N's yard, no way should we spend one penny on this. Um, if this was any other industrial yard within the city of Warman, we wouldn't spend a penny on fence. Not only that, but if any other industrial yard looked as as horrible as C N's yard does, we would require them to have a fence and require it to be gated as well. So so given that uh, you know, the information I received back from from uh City Manager Smith uh earlier in that they're subject to our bylaws, just like any other uh industrial landowner, why are we building the fence? It doesn't make sense. We should actually, given how much of a safety hazard their yard is and how horribly kept it is, we should be requiring them to build a fence around their yard.
Uh, thank you, Counsel uh Peterson. Uh, just as noted in previous when I was speaking with Mr. Braun, um, the the request for whistle cessation came from the city. Uh, and if there wasn't a request for whistle cessation, there would be no requirement for the fence. Uh, therefore, C N's looking at it in terms of if the city wants whistle cessation, uh, then it should be our responsibility to cover the cost of that fence. Uh, C N would be, like I said, kind of more than happy to continue with the status quo uh and then no fence would 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 be required to be installed uh from their perspective.
Just as a follow-up to that, um, what I'm saying though, Brad, is that uh we should not be happy to go, even if we don't go forward with whistle cessation, we at all should not be happy with going with the status quo with their yard as it is. We should be requiring them to have a fence to, in order to keep trespassers out. Like, the city to put up a fence to keep trespassers off their yard, that's ludicrous. Like, I mean, I mean, I can't even believe we're talking about that. Um, it's a it's a safety issue, their yard and how poorly it's kept and what's on that yard. I'm actually quite surprised someone hasn't been hurt on that yard prior to this.
Yeah, and it's not uh in terms of safety or, sorry, trespassing in terms of uh, you know, protecting them from theft or anything like that. The the purpose of the fence is to prevent pedestrians from crossing the tracks anywhere but uh the the crossings where sidewalks cross at the lights and arms. Um, it's not necessarily to, you know, prevent theft or or just like your regular trespassing that you'd find on an industrial site. It's to basically funnel people to either the industrial road intersection where there's a a sidewalk crossing the tracks or same thing with the the Sixth Avenue South crossing. Um, but again, comments well received.
I I just to comment there, Counsel Peterson, to just, it it's almost two different issues. I I agree that uh and I I've I've brought up, I've brought up the the idea of the the safety or sorry, the uh the yard before and and the mess in the yard. But this is coming down to our request, do we want whistle cessation or not? So that that there's a yes or no to that aspect, and then do if we wanted, do we want to pay the cost to do that or not? And and we say no, like, that's that's really the question that we're given right now, that we can choose not to. But we've we've gone, this is about a bit about a four-year journey with some of this. And and I just, I I think it's important that when you're asking for whistle cessation, they're looking at the insurance of there's no whistles, which means they want the safety of the people going to where there's visuals, which is the crossing walks, which means there's a fence, there's a barrier to get there. While there's whistles, they're saying that that does not have to be there. So um, I will, I I'll I'll go to Counsel Ramage.
Uh, thank you. And uh, that's Manager Toth. I I believe we've, uh, this question we've discussed before, but just for clarification, um, recognizing um mess in the yard um and some of the uh some of the response if warm and fire were ever uh necessary to respond or assist with uh with anything uh within the C N yards, even with the fence, um, would, how might that uh impact uh any response either from warm and fire or from the C N uh response itself?
Um, we have actually ran the fence by Fire Chief Austin. Uh, he didn't have any concerns because there still will be access from both ends. So either the Sixth Avenue end on the south side or the industrial road end on the south side. Keep in mind that the fence is only planned on the north side of the tracks. So um, the south side of the tracks, you you could still access the property quite easily if if there was an emergency situation.
Okay, other questions? Counsel Seed, you had your hand up here. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. Uh, just a couple of questions on this is that I understand that this is something you're suspecting that it's uh been in previous councils as well. Um, I I I believe that uh um council had, as was indicated, been working on this for at least four years or more. Um, my biggest question is as regards to the fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents is that I don't recall seeing that specifically in a portion of the budget for twenty twenty-one. I fully could be mistaken on that, but I'm just looking for some clarification. If that was in fact budgeted for, and if it was not, then uh where would the money be coming from?
Uh, yeah, maybe City Manager Smith will have uh uh an answer to in terms of where it will come from. But uh it was not a budgeted item for this year because we were unsure if it was uh, if it was going to actually come to fruition this year. Um, so it was one of those ones that we go to council for at the time with the resolution for the funding. Um, I'm not sure if City Manager Smith has any comments in terms of what reserve account that will come out of or most likely to come out of.
Where's the finance manager? Um, it would, again, it would, it would come out of our reserve for future expenditures. Those are the things that just uh come up as uh, I guess, surprises. Um, this wasn't a surprise, except for at the time when we were doing the budget uh last year, uh, we weren't a as close as we now are getting an answer from C N that they, you know, this is the last thing that is required uh in in order for us to get approval. Uh, so in saying that, I guess, um, what the uh, what should have been added to to the recommendation is that, and it come out of um, it uh the, come out of the uh reserve for future expenditures.
Other questions or comments? Uh, just probably a little bit of uh, just one question I have. So what have we reached out to C N? What what all have we done about trying to get them to be paid partial partially with this or not? Because I agree, I I don't like paying for it, but I understand it's either, you want, do you want whistle cessation or don't? And it's just one of those ones that, and just like our stoplights that are currently there that are crossarms, those were required to move to the next step. You know, and you know, so and then even what they look like, those were required to move to the next level of whistle cessation or not. So in some ways, we are deciding whistle cessation or not uh at with this. So what have we done to try and get any funding from C N for this?
We did reach out to C N when we initially started this process in terms of what they would cover for costs. Um, the improvements that were done to the intersections in terms of the flashing lights and arms, uh, Transport Canada funded a portion of those, but not because it was part of whistle cessation. Transport Canada won't fund stuff just for whistle cessation. They looked at the safety aspect and how it improved safety at those two intersections, whether whistle cessation went through or not. Um, in terms of the fence and funding, uh, we've even more recently, uh, I believe it was last year, had a conversation with Linda Vergata at the time who we were dealing with. Uh, and again, that question came up and, you know, basically a non-starter because there hadn't been precedents for C N covering the cost when the city's making a special request like this.
Uh, Counsel Beck?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. Yeah, well, this year I just wanted to, you know, you know, to certainly clarify. You know, this year, you know, certainly in my motion, I am willing to, you know, to include that this does come from, from the future reserve. You know, you know, you know, to certainly account for that there in the budget. You know, so this year I am certainly willing to include that there in my motion. As a comment, though, you know, this year I do want to, you know, certainly, you know, you know, let's indicate to all of council of, you know, our current council. This has been, you know, certainly, you know, you know, one of those things that, you know, you know, that certainly over the years, there has been a lot of discussion. And, you know, let's say from, from our residents, asking for the whistle cessation to kind of come in. And with this year, like, like there again, this is like the step in the progression. And by all looks and accounts as being reported here from administration, this year looks like it would be the final step, you know, for us, you know, to actually achieve that. So with this year, I mean, like, I certainly recognize the time, the patience and the effort that has gone into this particular file up to this point. And, yeah, you know, like there again for me, while, while I'd love to turn on and say, you know what? This is not our responsibility, it's not our cost and whatnot, you know, you know, for the, you know, for the good that we're going to, you know, certainly, you know, let's say get with our residents and whatnot. To me, that fifty thousand dollar cost, while I'd love to avoid it, seems necessary in this particular case. So, so I guess that's, that's my motivation with, we're carrying the torch on this one.
Thank you for that. Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, thank you for your report. We'll move down to recreational matter, McGonigal.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Chuck, members of council. I bring one item for your discussion tonight, and that is the discussion of purchasing a new riding floor scrubber for the Legend Center as a result of a motor failure to the current floor scrubber at the Legend Center. The floor scrubber that is experiencing the motor failure has exceeded the hours of recommendation for usage. And so we are, at this point in time, not making the recommendation to repair or replace the motor, which would be approximately six thousand to sixty-five hundred dollars. As the life of the riding floor scrubber is at the end of its life, we have been replacing smaller items on the machine. So we're not going to make that recommendation right now. What we would like to make the recommendation for is to purchase a new floor scrubber and to purchase, purchase it out of the twenty twenty-one capital budget. Our capital expenditures, we've been pretty good this year. We've got good pricing on a number of the projects and items that we were purchasing. And we have, out of the five hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars that was allocated in the department's twenty twenty-one capital budget, we have seen savings of approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. And we are looking to purchase that machine to replace the current machine at a cost of about twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents, applicable taxes included in that. So, and we would like to purchase that from the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay, motion please. Counsel Seid.
Move to authorize administration to purchase the riding floor scrubber for the Legend Center from Pinnacle Distribution in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents, applicable taxes included, and that it be from the twenty twenty-one capital budget.
Seconder. Counsel Peterson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carried.
Thank you very much.
Motion to file admin reports. Counsel Peterson.
I move to file the administration reports for Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one as presented.
Seconder. Counsel Ramich, any questions from that? Seeing none. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we'll move down to council committee reports. We'll start with my reports. It's always tough coming up with these almost a week ahead. So, a couple of things, just a couple of things that I mentioned. Today, I signed a bunch of checks from SAS Lotteries that, that go out on behalf of City of Warman. So it's good to see all the different organizations that are, are getting money for, in those areas. So that's in accounts today. You'll see many of those. Also, all of you were notified that Bridget Mont, Mont Grand will be our new youth counselor starting in the November meeting. We had two fantastic candidates interviewed, and they were both very professional, very strong, just incredible. They really represented themselves, Warman High School, and their, their peers very well. So, thank you for, for their interest in that. And just the other one was, I was in my office signing the checks today and just noticed the, the good PR that sort of comes out of us passing out those testing kits that people are coming in and they're very appreciative that they're able to pick up these testing kits at City Hall. And, and, and again, it's, a lot of times it's because they have youth at home, there's different reasons why. But having those as a free aspect for people to pick up within the City Hall and at the chamber, I think really do meet our community well. So with that, if there's no questions. Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to file my report. Counsel Seid.
Move to file the mayor's report for Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one as presented.
Seconder. Counsel Tulley. Any questions? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, we'll do roundtable and we'll start with Counsel Ramich.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. I had an opportunity to have a Remembrance Day Planning Committee meeting last week. Yeah, a lot of great work being taken, taken on there. We've reflected on two of the letters that were received late last year in response, both in support of the service and with some, with the recommendation that, that can increase the inclusivity of the, of the event. Both, so that's been, that's been acknowledged and, but I think all in all, the service will be consistent with how it was last year. And, and looking, looking forward to it. And other, yeah, other than that, that's everything I have.
Thank you. Counsel Peterson.
Yeah, as I'd mentioned, both by, by text and earlier this evening, you know, I've quite, I guess disgusted would be the best word I could use, with the state of the CN yard. It's in the last, you know, I would say, you know, six months to a year, it's gotten worse, not better. There are, you know, quite a few dangerous things just laying around, you know, spikes, you know, railroad, discarded railroad tracks that are thrown kind of half-hazardly, not stacked neatly, they're, they're thrown half-hazardly, you know. I can see kids getting in there and playing on that and easily falling and getting seriously hurt or having a, having a, you know, one of those fall on top of them, you know, if things, you know, shift or whatever. It's become quite dangerous of an area. And I think at this point, I, I think we need to take some action on it. And, and I think we need to enable, we need to give administration a little bit more oomph and say, you know, I would suggest, I'd like to make the motion that we write a letter to CN requiring that they clean up their yard by April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Or, or put a fence around their yard, one or the other. I think that, that is a reasonable length of time, and I think it's, it's, it's more time than.
Okay, I'll stop. If, I'll maybe look for a second or for that if we want to, and then allow you to discuss it, if anybody would like to second that motion at this time. I don't see anybody second it this time. I think we'll bring it back at a future time. Or, you know, I, I think it's just the, making sure we have administration with the information for this. Okay, other comments, Counsel Peterson?
I'm just, I, I am a little disappointed. It's, we, we've actioned, you know, private yards and, and other, you know, other properties that have looked way better than this looks, and that we're not actioning it. It's, you know, not okay with that.
Okay, Counsel Ramich.
Uh, thank you. I, I know it's Counsel Peterson's report here, but I, I think one thing I would be interested in getting from administration that might be along the lines of what Counsel Peterson is looking at is how we deal with different, like Crown agencies or CN or things where there's property owners that are a level of government where there is, where there's unsightly conditions, concerns such that Counsel Peterson's bringing up. Because I feel like if we're going to do this for the, the CN yards, we could also get some guidance on how we deal with property owners that are CN or different level of government from administration and just can have that discussion there. I just, I, I think that might be an approach to take, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and I, I think, I think administration, and, and I think just to focus this back, I think administration is heard. We do have bylaws, we do have rules that are followed, and then I guess it's asking for where things are at on a regular basis is fair. We'll, we'll continue with our roundtable, and then if you have comments about that, we can go. Because there's no motion on the table to discuss this. So if people want to discuss this specifically, we need a motion. Let's move to Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Chuck. So I've been really busy with the planning committee for the Prairie Rivers Reconciliation Fall Conference. We've got a fantastic lineup of some speakers, some comedians, and three sort of afternoons. It starts November seventh in the evening with some entertainment. We've got a youth drum group, we've got some performers from, that are getting, gaining notoriety across the, across Canada, as well as a dance group that's going to be doing a performance for us. And then each of the days has sort of a designated theme. So we have a youth day, which we've got a couple hockey players. Got a young lady from Mistawasis and a young man who's one of the youngest youth counselors for Mistawasis First Nation who played hockey in Las Vegas for a little bit. And his, I believe it's a cousin or relative of his, Sydney, who is a former Harvard hockey player, and she is currently the assistant coach at Harvard, so giving back. So they're going to be doing this talk to the youth. And then there's some, we've got some education days, we've got Iron Wolf Consulting and a bunch of different speakers. We've got three different panels going on on the third day for the Economic Development Day and building partnerships and, and establishing relationships with non-first nation and first nations people to help develop relationships in the business world. Student, the Indigenous Student Society from Edward School of Business will be part of one of the panels. We've got Kristin Johansson from Srida, who will be one of the moderators. So it's just, it's just gearing up to be a fantastic lineup and something offered for everybody. So I encourage all of you to get that, get your registrations in. It's completely free, it's virtual. I know we're all kind of a little bit zoomed out, so hopefully it'll be the last and we'll have more meetings in person. But it's free, there's going to be a poster sent around, and I hope that there's going to be a lot of take on those days. It's going to be recorded as well, so it'll be something that if you can't quite get to it, then you'll be able to access it at another time. But it's, there's something for everyone there.
Thank you, and thanks for your work on that. I know Eric will be sending out information, and Counsel, welcome to go to that for sure. It does meet our call to action of being informed and educated with reconciliation. Counsel Tulley.
It's actually been, I guess, relatively quiet for me, other than I attended the Wheatland Regional Library Board Meeting a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday afternoon, after I did a little bit of a shift in Woby. Really nothing significant coming out of that needing to report back on. And outside of that, it's, yeah, been pretty quiet for me. So that's all I got right now.
Counsel Seid.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Chuck. It's been fairly busy. There's been quite a bit going on with regards to the golf course wrapping up. I did attend a meeting there last week, which is regularly scheduled once a meeting. I will be attending their year-end AGM tomorrow evening as well. By all accounts, an absolutely incredible year. I will be sharing some of the public information with council once the AGM is concluded. But just as a general idea, and again, it is, you know, public information. They're always been looking forward to a break even, you know, maintaining the golf course, doing the small upgrades they need to do. I'm very, very pleased to report that they had profits in excess of five hundred thousand dollars this year, which is something that the golf course has never experienced. I'm also quite happy to say that in, as a result of that, they are looking at some significant capital improvements that they will be looking for recommendations that will be brought back to the city on with the partnership that's there. But absolutely incredible year, and indications our next year will be likely as strong. So that's been really, really encouraging. They did have a board member, and I'll, I'll put it in my report after tomorrow. Step down is required after a nine-year term. So it was quite nice to be able to be present for the last meeting with that board member and, you know, thank him for all the service that he had with regards to, to the golf course. Did stop by and speak with Chief Austin as well. You know, a slight mitigation of some of the COVID calls, but certainly still some big concerns from the members there. They have had a few members that have stepped down as a result of not being able to or being comfortable with attending some of those calls and feeling that they were letting down their team members. That's a huge disappointment to me, not in the members themselves, but in the fact that they're still being put into a position that they're being asked to answer calls that they, they quite frankly shouldn't be at. Overall, though, the mental health aspect of the fire department is doing very, very well. They have a good core there. They're, they're taking care of each other. I did stop by the RCMP detachment late last week and just wanted to drop off some doughnuts and coffee just as a thank you on behalf of citizens, as a, as a general rule. They were quite happy to receive them. And again, they're, you know, just keep in mind, I think, that they're under a tremendous amount of stress as well, just with regards to a lot of the calls and a lot of things you're dealing with. So I would just encourage everybody that if you're, you know, in front of an RCMP member to drive through or something like that, you know, reach into your pocket and spare a couple extra bucks for a coffee or something if you could. But all in all, Protective Services, I think, is sitting in really, really good shape here in Warman. And we, we have a great crew, it's very, very dedicated.
Thank you. Counsel Beck.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Phil Chuck. So I'd like to take this time to, to just remind all of council that the Sumo Regional will be on November second. So this year it is basically sectioned out in two parts. There's a morning where it's basically general updates, you know, you know, from Sumo staff and, and administration. And then in the afternoon there, we, we do break out to our regional discussions. So, so I am looking forward to hosting that, and certainly this year, if any of you have the opportunity to attend, it's certainly welcome to see you there. So that's your reminder for that. And this year, I'd just like to say, you know, it's going back to the past couple of weekends here. You know, this year, you know, it's certainly, you know, great to see that, you know, that our council and administration do get to work together on projects, you know, such as will be in the household hazardous waste. I mean, obviously with this year, it's great that we kind of get out and, you know, get to see our residents and, you know, you know, certainly see the, like, the level of service, you know, that we put out there and the appreciation for that. But also with this year, it is also nice to, you know, to certainly work side by side with, with some of our administrative staff, rather than only just seeing them just in, you know, a quick, you know, ships kind of passing by. So with this year, so thank you to everybody there that, that did, you know, step forward and, and certainly help out both of those events. One final point is, you know, like there again, like, you know, you know, let's say like our, like our administration, you know, certainly stepping up to, to actually be a, a, a distribution center, you know, for the rapid COVID, you know, you know, test. You know, let's say handing out to, let's say, to our residents and, and those that want it. Certainly nice to kind of take some of that pressure and responsibility off of our firefighters. Obviously with this year, you know, I'm like, they're still doing their thing, but it's certainly nice that we have that extra. Obviously with this year, you know, I'm like, they're still doing their thing, but it's uh, certainly nice that we have that extra. Uh, you know, uh, you know, point of service, so I just wanted to recognize our firefighters and also our our administration for that. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, uh, Council Beck. So we will move down and and. And we will move down to, I guess we have accounts. Motion please. Council Beck.
Yeah, I'd like to move uh, to approve the city accounts as presented by checks numbered two six two five zero through two six three six five. The total amount of one million seven hundred and thirteen thousand eleven dollars and eighty cents. And the payroll vouchers numbered one three one one, pardon me, one three one one seven. Through one three one nine zero in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, one eighty-seven and eighty cents. For Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Secondary. Council Ramage. Any questions from accounts? Seen none. All those in favor? Carried. And I was just going to mention, it'll be nice that we're going to get back in person, uh. Uh, a- after and we will be at the Brian King's Center with our meetings. Uh, motion to adjourn. Council duly.
I move to adjourn the Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting of council.
Secondary. Uh, Council seat. Any questions? All those in favor? Carried. Again, thank you very much. Everyone have a great evening and we will see you uh, see you soon and. That's it.